Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Potts.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
And Mayor Bowders.
Here. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I so move.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Donahue and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Potts.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Ex parte communications. Members, is there anything to report? Hearing none. Public comment for the consent agenda and items not on this agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion on the consent calendar.
I so move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Member Donahue and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Potts.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. The time is 7:15. That meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:15. I call to order the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. I'll take a motion to approve this agenda.
I move. We approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Donahue and a second from Member Potts to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Potts.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Ex parte communications for the Redevelopment Agency. Seeing and hearing none, public comment or for consent items or items not on this agenda for the Redevelopment Agency. Seeing and hearing none, I'll take a motion on the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Martinez and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve consent. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Potts.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:15. That meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:16. I call to order the City Council of the City of Emeryville's general meeting. They're now on the main agenda. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. For approval of the final agenda, I have a request to amend the agenda. Is there any other requests? I would like to motion, members, that we move item six ahead of item four if we could. And with that, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda accordingly.
Second.
I have a motion by the mayor and a second by Councilmember Martinez to amend the agenda as ordered. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Potts.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, so before we get to our special orders of the day, I've moved ahead on the agenda one item, which is council member's special announcements and reportings on meetings attended. I have quite a list this evening. It's not usual like that, but I'm going to start off with one item and then I'm going to ask members if they have other things. I'll go to the rest of the list. If you're in the Emeryville community, you may be aware that this past week we had an event in our community where racist conduct took place. And we needed to open this meeting and move this item forward because it's important to call out racism when it happens and to make sure it is abundantly clear to the public that it has no place in this community. I want to applaud Ayesha Weber and Fay Eastman Adams, who are two women who have been members of our community for a very long time, who witnessed children being subjected to a racial epithet and who spoke out against it here in our community. I have had the opportunity along with Vice Mayor Medina to listen to them and make sure that they were heard throughout this process. And I feel it's very important to just open by thanking them for being a voice of reason and for standing up for racial justice and equality in our community. And I think it's also important to note that racism has a real toll on people. And when you sit and listen to someone's personal stories and you listen to how it impacts them, it is a very serious thing and it's not tolerable in this community. And so I'm grateful to Vice Mayor Medina for all her partnership and work with me this past week. I'm grateful to our city staff, who are excellent and phenomenal people to work with and who embrace everyone. And I'm grateful to everyone in this room because I know that that is the true spirit of our community. And so with that, I'm going to end that comment. At this time, I'm going to invite other members who wish to report on meetings attended to do so. I'll begin with Member Potts. Do you have anything?
Yes, I do. So this last week, I was in Washington DC with NARU, the National Housing Organization, and attended the HUD conference and was able to see Secretary Carson speak about the direction that HUD has taken. And I'll not critique his speaking, but talk about the content of what he had to say. And it's, just at this time, I cannot emphasize enough how the federal government, who has taken a lead in housing and housing discrimination, is rolling that back. And I, when he spoke, it was somewhat clear that he was trying to deregulate, as they like to say. But when under Secretary of Housing spoke after him, she made it abundantly clear that it was not a priority and that housing discrimination, she did not mention at once in her fiery speech that involved gun, carrying guns places and various other things that she deemed important, but nothing about housing equity or helping support people find housing solutions. And so I feel very important to report out on that. You know, NARU recognized the Republican Senator from Idaho, Michael Crapo. I have a difficult time remembering his name. But again, it was around regulation cleanup as opposed to anything really to support housing. But the highlight of the trip for me was going to, they took us to go see an exhibit at the National Building Museum on the book Evicted. And if you have not read the book Evicted, or if you're in DC in the next six months, I highly recommend seeing this. The book covers the lives of, I want to say, eight families that are dealing with being evicted in Milwaukee. And both the content of the book, but the exhibit was fascinating to see what it looks like to go through that process and to listen into the eviction process and the hearings. Just staggering. In the city of Milwaukee, there's not like 40 people evicted every day, per day. And they had a great, just to visualize all the things that happened, and I'll leave you with this. The most moving piece was they had all the property that was in their house that when they were evicted, all wrapped up in one small package. And just there to see what it looks like to have all that put out on the street. And so I'm really proud of our city that we are both covering what Mayor Bowders just said and working on solutions for these sort of challenges. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for going to that. Vice Mayor Medina.
I have no meetings to report out on, and I think you have all the transportation-related special announcements covered.
Yes. Member Donahue?
I've been sitting on a committee having to do with saving Alta Bates's emergency room for our community. Having emergency services close to us is important. And many East Bay leaders have been strategizing how we can somehow keep Alta Bates's emergency room. Well, I just want to report that our Assembly person, Tony Thurman, has introduced a bill, Assembly Bill 2874. And it's passed through the Health Committee, so it's going forward. And his bill is that hospitals, if they're going to be closed, this bill says should obtain written consent from our California Attorney General prior to closing. And there's a chance this could pass the Assembly and the Senate and be signed by the Governor. And with the consolidation of the healthcare industry, the spaces between emergency rooms is getting further and further apart. And so our Assembly District 15 person, Tony, is trying to do something about it. So I just think that we should be happy with this.
Thank you. Member Martinez?
I've got a couple of things. So I serve as on the Board of Directors of East Bay Community Energy. And recently, we decided to add a 100% renewable option to the array of electricity options that you can purchase, which will, that'll happen in later this year when we do our Phase Two enrollment, when all residents will be rolled on to the Community Choice Aggregation. For those of you who don't know, cities and the county got together so we can procure cleaner, greener energy at rates that either meet or are lower than PG needs rates. So what we're going to have available for residents is a basic option, a 100% GHG-free option, and 100% renewable option. And if you want definitions on those, I can explain them to you another time. Don't want to take up too much time. I also serve on Stop Waste, which is Alameda County's Waste Management Authority Recycling Board and Energy Council. And I just wanted to touch on something that you folks might be seeing in the news. It has to do with China having instituted specific policies that have effectively closed the doors on most mixed recycling. So they have two policies called Blue Sky and National Source, which have affected American exports of recycled materials dramatically. So in 2017, we exported about 6 million tons to China. And in 2018, we exported only 2 and 1/2 million tons. So we're losing markets for our recyclables. But there's a message here that I want to share, that we need to continue recycling. We need to keep our sources clean. So if you're recycling at home or recycling at your business, we need you to keep things clean, dry, and separated. And I encourage everyone to minimize paper use. So just today at home, I went through all of my mail and I went to my retirement fund and several other pieces. And I chose the paperless option for all of my updates. So there's something that we all can do, and I encourage everyone, despite what you hear on the news, there are people all over Alameda County, the State of California, and hopefully some still at the federal level as well, who are working to resolve these issues and make sure that we have a place for all of those materials that we've been so diligently recycling. So please don't slip up on your really, really good behavior. We here in Alameda County do a really good job at recycling. Don't stop recycling despite what you hear in the news. There are solutions to be found, and there are a lot of people applying a lot of effort to take care of this situation.
Thank you. Okay, so I have, I have a considerable list here, but I'm going to work them quickly. So on April 19th, I had the opportunity to go to the Rising Sun Energy Bright Night Event in Berkeley. And if you're not familiar with Rising Sun Energy, it is a nonprofit that works to train young people who are not maybe the most traditional passengers through the education system, as well as adults who are coming out of addiction, homelessness, or incarceration, and gets them pre-apprenticeship jobs with building trades to do things like installing, sorry, installing solar panels, weatherizing homes. And I and the Mayor of Berkeley both went to their big gala because I had been tipped off a few months ago after I had a private meeting where they publicly announced that they are purchasing the City Line building in Emeryville, and they are permanently relocating their nonprofit here. And so they will be moving here this summer, and they're in contract. And I just wanted to give them a shout out because they do excellent work. They give a lot of people who are looking for second chances a pathway to employment, and it's really awesome that we have them coming to our city. So welcome. On April 20th, I went to the JSA Showers of Flowers event. JSA is a senior program center that's up on 67th Street, and they serve people through traditional Japanese culture. It is open to the public at large, and they partner with our senior center. They do phenomenal work there, and I was pleased to join them for their annual fundraiser on April 22nd. The City of Emeryville Shoreline Cleanup had the greatest turnout it's ever had. I want to thank the community for coming to that. We recovered some ungodly amount of trash. Most of it was plastic, I was told, about 80%. We had a lot of kids there. I want to give a shout out to a little girl named Beryl, who is probably the smartest person I have ever met. Seriously, she, I thought she was a chemist. She was explaining, she explained everything on the beach to me, and I basically was like, just take, take the lead, please. So I want to give her a shout out because she was, she was excellent. She's going to be a leader in this community someday. On April 26th was STEM Career Awareness Day. I want to thank Wareham Development for inviting me to speak to students from Oakland, Berkeley, and Richmond and Emeryville. Up in Berkeley at their Career Awareness Day with opportunities for them to join people in science, technology, engineering, and math in our, in our community for jobs someday. On May 10th, future announcements, on May 10th at 8:00 AM will be Bike to Work Day in the City of Emeryville, as well as across the East Bay. We will have a series of energizing stations around the city that begins at 8:00 AM. I encourage you to bike to work that day. And you can, you can go to Bike to Work, the Bike to Work Day website to get all the locations around the city. At 10:00 AM, after Bike to Work Day ends on the same day, May 10th, at Pelado Park, which is the newest extension piece of the Greenway, you may have seen it, the gates are down. It's at the southwest corner of Powell and Hollis Streets, and you see the weird wind turbine that looks like a giant cell tower. That is actually a functional piece that provides us with renewable energy. We will have a dedication of Pelado Park, the Greenway, the Greenway beginning south of Powell Street, and we will dedicate a giant mural that is being finished right now as we speak on the back of the Broken Rack Building. On May 22nd, between 7:00 and 9:00 PM in this room, the art community listening session will take place. So the proposed Art Center, which is right behind us here, has a big blue tarp on it. The applications were submitted, and the staff review of qualifications was completed, and there is a semifinal finalist panel of proposals, I should say proposers at this point, who are looking to do the project. And so there will be a listening session. So members of the community who wish to opine on the future of our Art Center should come on May 22nd, 7:00 to 9:00 PM. On May 23rd, at 6:00 PM, Growing Green in Emeryville. So we are going to return. I want to thank Chad Smalley, who's in here somewhere. There you are, Chad. Wave for everybody. Chad Smalley is small business extraordinaire here in our community. We are going to begin doing our quarterly small business program, and that is going to begin by Growing Green in Emeryville. And I want to thank Nassar Azimi and East Bay Therapeutics for hosting this event. It will be at 5745 Pelado Street, which is the future site of one of our two new cannabis dispensaries in Emeryville. And our speakers will include Dan Lieberman of East Bay Community Energy and Michelle LaFontaine of ABM, which is our local energy efficiency contractor. We will have a networking event for small businesses that evening and an opportunity to learn about energy efficiency programs for your business. And finally, I have two final announcements that are of a financial nature. I want to thank the Emory Unified School District. So last summer, the City Council, under Mayor Donahue's leadership at the time, authorized me to act on behalf of the City Council and try to capture unpaid funds due to fund the P-Bid, which, for those who are familiar, is the fund that funds the Emery Ground and serves the business and residential community. We have a series of property owners who had very significant delinquencies. I'm very pleased to report that this morning, the city manager executed a repayment contract for a full $300,000 with the school district to help continue funding the Emery Ground from past arrears. And that was a partnership that could only be done with the school board and their cooperation, and I'm grateful to all of them for their help with that. Finally, I have another announcement, which I hope people will be happy about. We, we had, I'm grateful to my colleagues, in December, we put a transportation study session on the agenda. And at that time, we studied opportunities for the city to bring other people's money, because we love to spend other people's dollars first, right? So we had an opportunity to prioritize some transportation infrastructure projects. And we looked at the capital improvement plan in the city. And for a long time, there has been an item on that plan, which was to create rail safety crossings at all three of our street-grade crossings at 65th, 6th, and 7th Street with the train. And that was to also effectively create quiet zones by doing that. So we would be able to reduce the noise impact on people who lived in the immediate vicinity of those crossings. The community really got behind this application, and we submitted a resident letter with the application with hundreds of resident signatures on it. And I was at the Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting last Thursday, where it was announced that the City of Emeryville was in the very first batch of cities and transit agencies selected in the state to receive funding under the SB 1 new trans-trade corridor project program. So that, that fund will fund 70% of the total project. We received a $4.2 million recommendation. It will be approved in a couple of weeks. And the county has sat down with me since then and informed me that they are going to make a budget adjustment in June, and they are going to recommend to our full commission that the City of Emeryville get its other 30% from the county, which means that we will be able to finance this project without taxing the Emeryville voter by a single cent. So I want to thank all of you up here for all of your partnership and support on that. Moving very quickly, in December, I want to thank Ryan O'Connell and Amber Evans and Andrew Klow for all your work and leadership in moving that application so quickly. Our neighbors in Berkeley had an application. It did not get approved. A lot of other cities up here did not get the money. Andrew's smiling. Emeryville got the money. So that will be, that money will be coming to us later this summer, and we have it in our top 10 priority work goals for staff. And I'm sure we will begin working with the railroad when we finish our current business with the railroad. So with that, that is the end of a very long announcement. Thank you for entertaining and hearing us through on that. And we will now return to the agenda on item four, special orders of the day. Members, if you'd join me in the audience. Okay, so May is Small Business Month. And the City of Emeryville, in keeping with our kind of theme for this year, each month, we are looking to lift up members of our community who are doing things that make our community a great place to live and work. And so for those who haven't followed us, we had a very large and festival-oriented Black History Month celebration in February. We celebrated Women's History Month in March. What did we do in April?
Earth Day.
What?
Earth Day.
Earth Day. Yes, we had Earth Day. I'm already forgetting what we did. But May is Small Business Month, and it's great that we're starting off here on the first day of the month, May Day, which is in support of worker appreciation, because small business owners are also workers. And they do a lot here in our community. And we want to recognize several outstanding small businesses. Chad and I had a very difficult task. Chad, I said, Chad, can you give me some info on some of these small businesses? And Chad basically said, they're all awesome. And so he made my job difficult, because it was like, we couldn't invite every single small business in the room tonight. So this is not by any means an exhaustive list of groups necessarily needing to be recognized. Over 58% of Emeryville's 1,000 businesses have under 55 employees, which is how we define a small business in our city. They employ over 4,000 people here every day. These businesses represent a total of $654 million in gross sales annually, which accounts for 26% of the total gross receipts of all Emeryville businesses. And so we're going to do a few honors this evening. I hope you will join me in celebrating the businesses we have tonight. And to start, I'm actually going to ask Chad to join me for the very first one. So the very first one is just simply a proclamation recognizing May as Small Business Month in the City of Emeryville. And Chad, you didn't know this, but I'm going to give you an opportunity to say something afterwards if you want. So boo. So, whereas since 2013, California Governor Edmund G. Brown Jr. has declared the month of May as Small Business Month in the state of California, and whereas the sustained culture of creativity and entrepreneurship has made the City of Emeryville a center of art and innovation in our state, and whereas Emeryville's small businesses produce technologies and make discoveries that improve the well-being of people around the world, and whereas Emeryville's small businesses create jobs and contribute to the city's unique culture, and whereas the City of Emeryville has over 600 small businesses operating in the city, and these firms employ over 20% of our city's workforce, and whereas the total revenue of these small businesses exceeds $900 million annually, representing a significant contribution to the city's economy, and whereas the Emeryville General Plan calls for the city to, quote, "retain and foster the growth of Emeryville businesses," and to encourage establishment of businesses that will employ and serve Emeryville residents, and whereas this month, we reaffirm our commitment to helping Emeryville's small businesses launch and prosper as a strategy to maintain and enhance the city's livability, expand job opportunities, and increase our competitive advantage in the marketplace. Now therefore be it resolved that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, I do hereby proclaim the month of May as Small Business Month in the City of Emeryville, proclaimed on this first day of May 2018 at a regular council meeting of the City Council by the Mayor of the City of Emeryville. Chad, I want to thank you. This isn't, this is about Small Business Month, not Chad. But in a lot of ways, those of you who own small businesses know Chad and know what a tremendous amount of work he does here in our city. So Chad, I know I didn't, I kind of dropped it on you, but this is, I'm going to hand this to you as the representative on behalf of everybody here today and offer you the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, thank you. I want to thank everyone who's in the room here. I mean, the number of small businesses represented here is astounding. And small business is what makes Emeryville run. It's true. They're all awesome. And it was, it was a difficult task to provide a list, because I could have gone on and on and on. And I, and I tell folks this in my personal life, interactive, well, what do you do? Well, I'm economic development manager in Emeryville. And well, what's going on in Emeryville? Let me tell you what's happening in Emeryville. In Emeryville, there are companies, there's 1,000 businesses in Emeryville, and a large proportion of those businesses do things that touch everyone every day. There is astounding discoveries being made. People's lives are being changed. Trends are being developed. Discoveries are being made. And it's happening in one square mile in the East Bay, here. And, and it's just tremendous. And folks, you all should pat yourselves on the back for, for contributing to what is an astoundingly dynamic and strong economy in the City of Emeryville. So thank you to the Mayor and the City Council for adding this personal touch to Small Business Month. It happens every year, but this is the first year we've done this. And it's, and it's great to actually call out just a, just a small sampling of those contributing businesses to this little dynamo we have here in the East Bay. So thank you.
Thank you, Chad. For my first proclamation, may I have Councilmember Potts join me up here? So the first proclamation is honoring Arizmendi Bakery. Where's Arizmendi Bakery today? Come on up here. Come on, but don't be shy. Join me and Councilmember Potts up here, please. Welcome. So we have a proclamation honoring Arizmendi Bakery for its contributions to the Emeryville economy. Whereas over 20 years ago, a group of enterprising individuals approached the Cheese Board Collective in Berkeley in search of guidance on how to establish a worker-owned cooperative bakery. And whereas with help from the Cheese Board Collective and inspired by the extraordinarily successful Mondragon cooperatives in the Basque country of Spain, Arizmendi Cooperative Bakery was established and named after Mondragon. Is it Mondragon or Mondragon?
It's funner to say Mondragon.
Mondragon. Let's be fun. After Mondragon Cooperative founder Jose Maria Arizmendieta. And whereas in 2003, Arizmendi Bakery's Emeryville location was established on San Pablo Avenue. And whereas each Arizmendi Bakery location is independently owned and operated as a worker-owned cooperative, with the Emeryville Arizmendi comprised of 15 owners. And whereas because each Arizmendi Bakery operates independently, each is unique, and the Emeryville Arizmendi regularly donates food to Emeryville community institutions, including the Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program, the Emeryville Senior Center, and to numerous community events. And whereas Arizmendi Bakery provides an annual Day of the Dead community event, which includes food and entertainment that is free to all attendees. And whereas Arizmendi Bakery actively supports the development of additional worker-owned business through its work with the Mandela Food Cooperative and the Development Support Cooperative. And whereas Arizmendi Bakery's sales data indicates an extraordinarily large percentage of returning daily customers, demonstrating a high degree of customer loyalty and support for the business. And whereas Arizmendi Bakery continues to grow its business and because of its worker, because it's worker-owned, the benefits of this growth accrue directly to the employees who live, work, and play in the Emeryville community. And whereas Arizmendi Bakery is an example of a small, independent Emeryville business that demonstrates how economic activity can be structured to benefit a wide variety of people and be financially successful while serving as a community partner. Now therefore be it resolved that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, during this recognition of Small Business Month 2018, I do hereby recognize Arizmendi Bakery for its contribution to the City of Emeryville's economy, and congratulate all the owners of Arizmendi Bakery on their continued success, proclaimed this first day of May 2018 by the Mayor of the City of Emeryville. Please join me in recognizing them. Anyone who wants to speak?
Sure.
Go for it.
Hey, folks. It's an honor to be here in front of all of you guys on this International Workers' Day. It's a pleasure to be able to work and serve the people who both live, eat, work, and come through Emeryville. It's an honor to be part of a workers' cooperative where we're able to control the aspects of business ourself and be intimately connected to the work that we do and the people that it helps. There are a couple faces in here that I do recognize from coming into our business, and I'm very honored to be able to talk with you guys here. I do ask that as we continue to build businesses here in Emeryville, and we see smaller businesses continue to grow, that we hold on to the ideals of providing a livable wage, a place that provides respect and decency for the workers, and ultimately and ideally a return of the means of production to the people who are working the restaurants.
That was good. That was really good. Okay, could I ask Member Donahue to join me up here, as well as CCD Innovation? That was awkward. Give him this, too. The photos just might not work for you if you're just both standing there holding flowers. Take it from me. Proclamation honoring CCD Innovation for its contributions to the Emeryville economy. Whereas in 1993, a food and beverage development business by the name of CCD Innovation was established. And whereas CCD Innovation blends the art, science, and business worlds to create innovative food and beverage products for consumers all across our nation. And whereas in 2013, CCD Innovation moved to Emeryville to position it for continued growth and to take advantage of the city's culture of art and innovation. And whereas CCD Innovation and its 10 employees have created over 200 food and beverage products, which in turn have created over $27 billion in revenues. And whereas approximately 25% of the products developed by CCD Innovation are currently on the market, 10% have been on the market for more than five years, and 5% have been on the market for more than 10 years, reflecting an extraordinary level of quality and longevity of the products developed over at CCD Innovation. And whereas CCD Innovation develops products for the world's largest food and beverage manufacturers and many major fast, casual, and quick-service restaurant corporations. So consequently, virtually every American has likely enjoyed at least several products developed at some point by CCD Innovation in Emeryville.
Who knew?
Who knew? And whereas every aisle in every major, there's a lot of evries here. Every aisle in every major grocery store in the United States contains products developed by CCD Innovation from Emeryville. And whereas CCD Innovation continues to grow and continues to use its base in Emeryville to fuel the creativity to develop additional food products and drive the trends that shape the market for food. And whereas in doing its work, CCD Innovation often brings its clients to Emeryville for onsite participation, conducts trend tours of local restaurants, and contracts with local chefs to provide culinary inspiration, and these activities contribute directly to the Emeryville economy. And whereas CCD Innovation is an example of a small Emeryville business with a global impact, demonstrating how Emeryville's unique confluence of art and innovation touches millions of people across the world while also supporting other small businesses. Now therefore be it resolved that as mayor of the city of Emeryville and on behalf of the city council of the city of Emeryville, during this recognition of Small Business Month 2018, I do hereby recognize CCD Innovation for its contribution to the city of Emeryville's economy and congratulate CCD Innovation partners Mark Halperin, Kimberly Egan, and Dori Hayner? Dori? Dori Hayner, for 25 years of being in business. Proclaim this first day of May 2018 by the mayor of the city of Emeryville. Please join me. And I think she's going to do that for you, and then we'll.
Oh, great.
Congrats, guys.
Oh, thank you.
What's that?
the, the support. We've been in business since 1992. We started in San Francisco, and we invent food for a living. We found that the venue in San Francisco for 20 years was very, very supportive of us and what we were trying to do, not only to feed the people around us, but to feed the people literally around the world as well. The opportunity came to move out of San Francisco after 20 years, and we identified a facility in Emeryville, actually two blocks down. And as soon as we walked into it, immediately fell in love, not only with the facility, but also with the area around us. The city of Emeryville has been really, really great to us and provides, as the mayor said and as the proclamation says, the opportunity really to use a lot of creativity in the invention of new food products. We bring in chefs from all over the Bay Area and all over the United States to help us do that, and all of them find the, the welcome that they've received from the city of Emeryville to be absolutely superb. So, I just want to thank all of the citizens, actually, for going to the supermarket or going to McDonald's or Burger King or whatever fast food restaurant you might want to visit, for purchasing the foods that we create with the intention of trying to feed people better. And that is our first and foremost goal. So, thank you very, very much for this honor.
I'll be really brief. I just wanted to say, in my career, I've had, I've spent several years working in New York City, in Los Angeles, and San Francisco, and now for the last several years, I've been here in Emeryville. And Emeryville, I'm in love with Emeryville. It has character and class and a heart that those other cities can't match. Every week, I stop at Arizmendi at least once on the way to work. Every week, I'm on the Emery Go-Round Shuttle, and I get into the most wonderful conversations with the shuttle bus drivers. Last time, we were dancing in our seats to La Freak. We were. There's just a tremendous heart in this city, and it's fantastic, and I love it, and I love you all for being a part of it, and I feel really blessed that I get to be a part of it and that CCD gets to be a part of it. Thank you.
And Patrick McStravic, Chase Beach, and Ben Harrington, are you here? From SuitX? I see one, two.
Patrick didn't make it.
Patrick didn't make it? What? Oh, he's got kids, okay.
Thank you.
You can, yes, thank you. Okay, honoring SuitX for its contributions to the Emeryville economy. Whereas SuitX was established in 2011 and moved to Emeryville in 2016 to take advantage of the city's central location, access to high-quality workforce, and its culture of innovation. And whereas SuitX develops exoskeletons designed for industry, manufacturing, construction, recreation, rehabilitation, and the general improvement of the quality of life for persons with mobility impairment. And whereas SuitX and its 37 employees hailing from 10 countries have shipped hundreds of industrial exoskeletons to over 31 countries worldwide. And whereas SuitX holds over 66 patents for exoskeletons and has been included in over 150 publications. And whereas SuitX continues to grow and use its headquarters here in Emeryville to develop additional exoskeleton products and to drive innovation in the bionics market. And whereas SuitX is currently conducting its food and drug administration trial for its medical exoskeleton, Phoenix. And whereas through use, the use of rehabilitation settings, Phoenix has the potential to grant the gift of mobility to individuals impaired by spinal injuries, resulting in life-changing outcomes for these individuals. And whereas SuitX was the winner of the 2016 UAE Robotics for Good Award, beating a pool of over 600 entries, and was a winner of the gold, and was, as the gold winner for innovation in the 2017 Edison Awards. And whereas SuitX is an example of a small Emeryville business whose innovations are being recognized by a global audience, demonstrating how Emeryville's culture and art and innovation results in life-changing discoveries for many. Now therefore be it resolved that as mayor of the city of Emeryville and as, on behalf of the city council of the city of Emeryville, during this recognition of Small Business Month 2018, I do hereby recognize SuitX for its contributions to the city of Emeryville's economy, and I congratulate SuitX on its accomplishments and accolades. Proclaim this first day of May 2018 by the mayor of the city of Emeryville. Please join me. And the clerk is back.
How's it going, everybody? My name is Ben Harrington. I'm the VP of Sales for SuitX. It's, first and foremost, I think it's great just to see everybody coming out to a local meeting like this and supporting the community and taking interest in the things that are going on in the businesses that are taking part in this community. I find it to be a real pleasure to be a part of a company like SuitX. Our mission is to help people with mobility challenges and, and to also cut down on workplace injuries. Turns out that, you touched on discrimination a bit earlier today, turns out that workplace injuries don't discriminate either. So, it's a worldwide marketplace we're trying to service, got a lot of really smart folks coming out of UC Berkeley that are really passionate about creating this technology and disseminating it and really proving the concept to, to help people keep pace with automation and other innovations that are coming out. So, thank you for the recognition. We appreciate you having us. It's great to be a part of the community of Emeryville and contribute a little bit of what we can, maybe not monetarily, but definitely from a notoriety standpoint. So, thank you very much for having us, and good luck to everybody else.
Vice Mayor Medina would join me, as well as, where's Ruslana and Yuzu Ramen? Steven?
Yes.
Awesome. So, honoring Yuzu Ramen for its contributions to the Emeryville economy. Whereas Foodzilla Corporation, doing business as Yuzu Ramen, was established in December of 2015, so relatively new, right? And whereas Steven Yamaji, founder and owner of Yuzu Ramen, is originally from Tokyo and Osaka, Japan, and possesses 20 years of experience in the restaurant industry specializing in bringing Japanese dining concepts to the United States. And whereas Ruslana Golonova, I got it, good. Business, what's that?
Finally.
Finally, right? I'm going to get my Russian down one of these. Business Development Director for Yuzu Ramen has been a member of the city's Economic Development Advisory Committee, we call EDAC here, since Yuzu Ramen arrived in Emeryville and has always been quick to volunteer her time for EDAC activities and subcommittees. And whereas Yuzu Ramen opened its first location at 1289 65th Street in Emeryville on September 2nd, 2016. And whereas Yuzu Ramen's specialty in serving high-quality, authentic Japanese ramen, designed and prepared by Japanese culinary experts using bone broth, made in-house from grass-fed, pasture-raised beef and pork, and organic vegetables. And whereas Yuzu Ramen's resource-intensive method of cooking involves a two, and two-to-three day process to prepare all its broths, resulting in an extraordinary product that has been well-received by Emeryville consumers and neighbors alike. And whereas Yuzu Ramen has experienced great success, serving approximately 2,000 miles of ramen noodles. Really, Chad? Chad, help me with this. I didn't catch that one. 2,000 miles of ramen noodles to date from its Emeryville location. I think that's half the globe. And whereas, from its initial location in Emeryville, Yuzu Ramen now has two locations in the Bay Area and plans to establish three more locations in the region with plans for its future growth. And whereas Yuzu Ramen is an example of a small, independent restaurant business that has enjoyed success in Emeryville and is using its opportunities in Emeryville to bring an authentic Japanese dining experience to the broader market while also demonstrating community-mindedness and engaging the city in its economic development efforts. Now therefore be it resolved that as mayor of the city of Emeryville and on behalf of the city council of the city of Emeryville, during this recognition of Small Business Month 2018, I do hereby recognize Yuzu Ramen for its contribution to the city of Emeryville's economy and congratulate founder Steven Yamaji and Business Development Director Ruslana Golonova for their successful venture. Proclaim this first day of May 2018 by the mayor of the city of Emeryville. Thank you.
It's such an honor to get the proclamation, the first one, from the city of Emeryville. A person like myself, who has come from Japan, starting a restaurant was never an easy task. But the community of Emeryville has embraced us and allowed us to try to do something that we believed in. And now we have a lot of people, I see a lot of familiar faces in this crowd today. And we're really honored to be here in Emeryville to serve Japanese ramen, and we're located on the 65th Street at Hollis. And we'd love to see you join us dinner and lunch. Thank you so much.
I would like to thank you, Emir, councilmembers, and Chad, of course, for a great support the city does for us. We are very happy to be in Emeryville and serve the community. And as you probably heard, I am a member of EDAC, so I'm here. If any questions regarding small businesses, if at some point we can help you guys, you always can contact me or Chad. Thank you.
Okay, our last, but certainly not our least, is we have a very special award which we save for last this evening. And so, I would like to invite the family of Andy Nikotiris to join me, whoever would like to join me up here. If you cry, I'm going to cry. So, let me give these to you so that. You want to join me right over here? And I'm going to give this to you. She's seriously going to make me cry? Okay. So, this is a proclamation celebrating the life of Andreas Andy Nikotiris, proprietor of the Bank Club Cafe, for his contributions to the Emeryville community. Whereas Andreas Andy Nikotiris was born on February 12th, 1942, in Leros, Greece, to Nikolaus and Stamatini Nikotiris. And whereas in 1960, Andy moved to the United States, to Emeryville, California, to help his father run the family business. And whereas that family business was a bar, cafe, and card club, known as the Bank Club, located at 3900 San Pablo Avenue in Emeryville, California. Whereas in 1976, Andy took over operation of the Bank Club after the passing of his father. In the late 1980s, converted the upstairs card club into a home for his family. And whereas for 42 years, Andy worked 16 hours a day, seven days a week, at the Bank Club. And through his work ethic and kindness, made the Bank Club a community institution that reflects and strengthens Emeryville's values. And whereas the Bank Club has been, from its inception, an independent business that serves a neighborhood clientele that mirrors the broad diversity of Emeryville, and has served as a community meeting place where the neighbors and workers of Emeryville connect with each other, building the personal ties that make this city a home. Whereas the Bank Club is also a physical repository of Emeryville history, containing innumerable artifacts of Emeryville's rich past, with a focus on the people who make a community. And whereas the Bank Club is a multi-generational family business, Andy's four children, Anna Stamasha or Stamatia? Stamatia, thank you. I am married to a Greek, I should know this. Katina Nikolaus?
Nicholas.
Nicholas, also operate the Bank Club, and Andy's tireless work at the Bank Club allowed him to provide his children with a college education. And whereas Andy opened the Bank Club every day of the year, including Thanksgiving and Christmas, to provide a place for his clientele, because in his words, "They are also his family." And whereas Andy never hesitated to open the Bank Club's door to people in need, providing help as a true neighbor and resident to people here in Emeryville. And whereas Andy loved Emeryville and enjoyed fishing the waters of Emeryville and riding his bicycle on Emeryville's streets. And whereas on April 9th, 2018, Andy Nikotiris passed away suddenly, leaving a legacy of work, kindness, and community that is treasured by all who have met him. And whereas Andy's children will continue to operate the Bank Club, allowing this key piece of Emeryville history to continue on, to serve as a shining example of how a small, independent business can be a community catalyst. Now therefore be it resolved that during this recognition of Small Business Month 2018, as mayor of the city of Emeryville and on behalf of the city council of the city of Emeryville and its people, Emeryville and its people, I hereby recognize Andreas Andy Nikotiris, the Nikotiris family, for their service to the City of Emeryville and its residents, and for the kindness and happiness that they have brought thousands of patrons who have been served by the Bank Club for these 58 years. Proclaimed this first day of May 2018 by the Mayor of the City of Emeryville. I would like to thank the City of Emeryville, the Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, staff, Fire Department, and Police Department for always being kind to our Nikotiris family, the Bank Club Cafe, and Wally's Cafe. My dad really loved the City of Emeryville. A lot of times, you know, he would say, you know, San Francisco, Walnut Creek, you know, nothing's as good as Emeryville, we have the ocean here nearby, which he loved to fish, and he loved to take his bicycle on all of these nice bicycle lanes that the city has created, so he definitely used those. But my father really loved the City of Emeryville and felt a sense of pride living in Emeryville, and he raised our family here, we're all born and raised here in Emeryville, product of Emeryville Unified School District, which did a great job. So, our entire family, Bank Club family, and Wally's Cafe would like to thank you very much for honoring my father. Okay, we have one more proclamation, but it is about Affordable Housing Month, and then we will return to the dais. Where are my, come on up here. Where are my friends for Affordable Housing Week? Hey, how you doing? Good to see you.
Yeah, you too.
Hi, thanks for being here. Okay, proclamation recognizing the week of May 10th to May 20th as the 22nd Annual East Bay Affordable Housing Week, Building Communities, Building Power. Whereas quality affordable housing is vital to healthy, safe, vibrant, and diverse communities. And whereas affordable homes are the solution to homelessness, and provide support to seniors, families, youth, veterans, and people living with disabilities. And whereas rising housing costs have led long-term residents to be displaced, live in overcrowded and substandard homes, or to become homeless, threatening our region's diversity and its economic prosperity. And whereas the City Council has placed Measure C, a $50 million affordable housing bond, on the June 5th, 2018 special election ballot. And whereas Measure C will provide funding to provide affordable housing, prevent displacement of vulnerable populations in Emeryville, including low and moderate income households, veterans, seniors, and people living with disabilities, to provide supportive housing to those who are experiencing homelessness, and to help low and middle-income households and working families purchase homes to stay here in our community. And whereas the East Bay Housing Organizations has organized Affordable Housing Week for 22 years, and will feature 15 events acknowledging the need for and benefits of affordable housing. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, I hereby proclaim the week of May 10th to 20th, 2018, as the 22nd Annual Affordable Housing Week here in the City of Emeryville, and I've proclaimed this the first day of May 2018 by the Mayor of the City of Emeryville. Thank you.
I'm Anita, I live in Emeryville, I've been with EPO Housing for like three years. We've been fighting for A1 and JJ, and it passed, and so we're having a kickoff this coming month on the 10th. So, EPO Housing, you can go online, look on EPO Housing, and it has the website, and they will have the address to kickoff. We would like to invite you, and the mayor, all y'all, to our kickoff this month, for this year. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Welton Jordan, I'm a Vice President of Real Estate Development for EAH Housing, and also an EPO member. Would like to thank the City of Emeryville for this proclamation. And as a, again, as a member of EAH and EPO, we strongly support Measure C, and won't waste too much more of your time, but thank you again and hope to see you at the EPO events the next coming weeks. Thank you.
Counsel, if you could join me back at the dais. And members of the public, if you are not wishing to stay for the rest of the agenda, this would be your opportunity, if you wanted to make a stealthy exit, we will not be offended if you do that. Actually, while they're doing that, commission vacancies?
So, we've now advertised for our annual appointment for expiring terms. Applications are due to our office by June 11th, and appointments will be made at the City Council's special meeting on June 26th, it'll start at 6:30 that night. And we have also asked for incumbents in their positions to indicate whether they wish to be reappointed, and so we're gathering that information as well.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, do you have a report tonight?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would like to ask Division Chief Dave Yoder to step up to the podium to be introduced.
Welcome, Mr. Yoder.
So, the chief has been with Alameda County Fire for 25 years. He comes to us as we lost our previous chief, Dave Winnaker, who has moved on to wonderful things in...
Maraga Rinda.
Maraga Rinda, yes. So, he's been with Alameda County Fire for 25 years, the last 11 years as captain, and six years as the captain overseeing the training academy, teaching and guiding future firefighters. So, we're delighted to have him, I think he went through a pretty in-depth interview process, and they know that our standards in Emeryville are very high, so we welcome you and invite you to say a few words.
Yeah, I'd just like to say it's an honor for me to be able to serve the citizens of Emeryville, the mayor, council members, and your awesome city staff. I've worked with them over the last month and spent nothing but good times. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Ex parte communications, I'll start with Member Donahue.
I don't have any.
Member Martinez?
I had a telephone conversation with Nathan Hong from Avalon Bay Communities regarding the noise waiver.
I did as well.
You'd like to amend your prior statement?
Yes.
Okay, we'll allow that. Member Medina?
I also had a telephone conversation with Nathan Hong.
Okay, and Member Pats?
Did not have a conversation with him, I was out of town.
Oh, we don't have a bingo, I did have a conversation with Nathan Hong regarding item 11.1. Public comment for consent agenda and items not on the agenda, I have one speaker card, John Fricki.
Yes.
Members of the public have three minutes of public comment.
Hello, Council members.
Hello.
I'm John Fricki, I'm here to talk to you about traffic in the Triangle neighborhood. Thank you for, each of you responding to my email messages about this. I think there's a problem, I think there's been a problem in the neighborhood for quite some time. It was highlighted by a pretty horrific traffic accident about a week and a half ago, and then another one on Sunday. The first one was on my street, 43rd Street, very fast-moving car struck a number of parked cars. And the one on Sunday, I'm not sure, I was not home, I heard from neighbors that there was a big pileup at 47th and Adeline. These two accidents, I think, highlight that there's too much traffic volume and the cars are going at too great a speed through the residential streets. It's a measurable problem, as I mentioned in my email, I think that it would be a good idea to collect traffic data, both volume and speed. This data were collected about 10 years ago, and it was collected in the month of May. So, it would be great to do the same at the same time so that we could compare then and now. And so I encourage you to put that on your next City Council meeting. The firm that collected the data last time, Wiltech, I contacted them and they are prepared to do so again. So, there's a cost, I think that it's a modest cost, given the problem, so I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other members of the public who wish to comment, or three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, Miru Desai, speaking here as the SEIU Chapter President. I'm here to speak on an item which was on your last agenda regarding Council goals and priorities. I apologize, I completely missed the item. Horton trees were kind of on my mind that day, but I have looked at the videos of both the last meeting as well as the meeting earlier where the Council discussed your goals. The point to which I'm going to talk about is the proposal or the idea of Public Informations and Communications Director. This is a new position that the Council is contemplating. I find it a little ironic, coming right after a rather brutal budget process that we have. But having said that, I would like to say that for not a single second do I think that we, as a city, do not need that. I feel that we need, as a city, to promote ourselves and communicate better between the city and the citizens, and I see that personally when I talk to my counterparts in other city jurisdictions. So, I do not doubt the importance of it, and I'm bored with that. What concerns me is the idea that you need one whole, full managerial position to do that. In my mind, a city manager's tasks can be distilled into three things: budget, PR and communications, and managing the directors. And you are now in a unique position to pick your next city manager in the next few months. So my suggestion is, why not pivot your recruitment for the new city manager and look for skillsets that are important to you, as evidenced by your suggestion about the Public Information and Communications Director. So this is something for the Council to think about. You know, what this really needs is a master plan of how to do it and then implement it. A one-whole person, it requires a team, and it can be done with the existing staffing that we have. So, something for, I know that you are just in the process of thinking about this, and I think it's positioned correctly that you will be picking a new city manager. And there are certain skillsets that you can ask your recruiter to look for, and then when you actually do the selection, look for that, and make that a priority. So that's all I have to say on this, at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Miru.
Hello, I would like to add my voice to what former Councilmember Fricki just warned you about, I would all say the word. Well, I think warning is a good word to use. I was in my vehicle in the Triangle, I guess it would be 41st Street, I guess, and the school there that used to be Annie Yates is now the German's, private school, German school. On Saturdays, they leave the gate open, which is great, because the community can go and use the, the kids can go use the playground. But a ball went right in front of my truck as I was driving up the street, and the kid ran right out, and luckily I was going, you know, at a reasonable speed, but had I been going faster, you know, considerably faster, it could have been a disaster. Every person I talked to that lives in the Triangle has been, I hear complaints about traffic volumes and speeds, I think it'd be who's to put a little bit of effort into seeing if we can solve this problem, like we tried to do 10 years ago. But I also wanted to finish with that subject, now I wanted to talk about, again, as I'm gonna say every time I speak to the five of you, there's no wheelchair access to this meeting right now.
So, Mr. Donahue, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add a minute to your time, but I actually conferred with staff, we have fixed the problem, and that, that door is supposed to be opening right now, Sherry, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, I just, I just tried it, and the answer is no.
It didn't work, I just tried it.
Well, I just tried it, and the answer is it didn't work, okay, this is an easy problem to solve.
I'm gonna, stop the clock, I'm gonna just say this, because you've brought this up every time, and I just want to respond to you since, I want to make good use of your public comment, that the city staff have looked into this, and that I, and I believe other council members, have followed up on this item, because ADA accessibility to this building is extremely important, you are correct about that. And I was assured today that this was working, and so if it is not working, we will immediately remedy that. But I want to assure you that we are working on that.
Okay, great, so hopefully, when I leave shortly, somebody from the staff can join me and I can show that it doesn't work.
I just, I went down.
Okay, I just tried it, it didn't work, so here's what, I'll do, I'll take a movie of it, and then, hopefully it'll be a timestamp. This is an easy-to-fix problem.
Please start the clock.
This is a very easy-to-fix problem about whether or not it's working, this is, I mean, there shouldn't be any problem with figuring out whether or not it's working, and we will get to the bottom of that, and if it's fixed, wonderful, and if it's not, shame on you guys. Also, the fire, at the Police Department, if the public interacts with the police, they could be killed if there's a fire. It's a fire trap, and I've told the City Council several iterations of the Council over several years about this. If a fire happens, citizens will be locked inside the upper lobby, and that's where they go to interact with their police. It's an illegal fire trap, there's no egress in the event of a fire, because the elevators will stop working. This is a problem I've been warning about, City of Emeryville about for years now. We spent four and a half million dollars on a police station remodel, and we couldn't even get this right. So this is, you know, I mean, everything, you always hear around here is how wonderful Emeryville is, there's an example where it's not so wonderful. So, again, we should try to fix that problem. I went forward and looked in the, in the agenda here, there's a future agenda item to put, apparently Cliff Bar is asking for a noise ordinance waiver at the next meeting, May 15th, I guess. I would like to say that Cliff Bar is one of the top 10 Emeryville businesses, at least in terms of employees, it's a large business, they don't give any money to the Emeryville schools. They're not legally required to, but I think that we should, that we should start pressuring our big businesses to donate money to our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time for items not on this agenda? Seeing none, I will, Member Pats, you wish to respond to public comment?
You know, I just want to point out that, much like yourself, I took the elevator, I made it a point to walk in through the accessible door using the button and take the elevator to the third floor, so I'm saddened to hear that it's not working now, but that was the first thing I did when I arrived, was to make sure it was accessible to the public, and it was at that time, I guess it is not now. And then, Cliff Bar gives tons of money to city events, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Yeah, that's not an agenda item tonight. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Medina, a second from Member Martinez, to approve the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauder?
Aye, the consent calendar is approved. Item 11 is public hearings, we have one public hearing this evening. Item 11.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, granting a waiver from the noise ordinance to Avalon Bay Communities for construction work on all Saturdays from May 5th, 2018 to May 18th, 2019, excepting May 26th, 2018, November 24th, 2018, and December 22nd, 2019.
22, 2018, at the Marketplace Project, Parcel C2 and Parcel D located at 6251 and 6301 Shellmount Street in the City of Emeryville. Miru Desai.
Good evening, Miru Desai, Senior Planner. This is a request to do Saturday work at the Marketplace Project, which is under construction. Specifically, the request is coming from Avalon Bay. They are the residential developers of Marketplace, and they are currently constructing two sites. One is what's called Parcel D. It's 223 units under construction. And then what's called Parcel C or Parcel C2, the second portion of C being the residential component along the existing, currently vacant store, grocery store. And this is about 66 units. So these are the two sites for which the noise waiver is being requested. And as you know, our standard construction hours on Monday to Friday, 7:00 to 6:00 p.m. And any work beyond these hours requires a permission from the council. So Avalon Bay is requesting to do construction at these two sites on all Saturdays, starting this Saturday, the coming Saturday till next day, May 18, excluding three vacations, which are basically Memorial Day weekend, Thanksgiving, and Christmas Day weekend. The type of work involved is just standard construction, including sidewalk, landscaping, concrete foundation, framing, and interior work. They expect to use 30 to 50 employees on every Saturday. The kind of equipment that they will be using are forklifts, nail guns, saws, and grills. And in your staff report, you have detailed an outline of what work is going to be done on which Saturday, and how many employees would be present at that time, and the person to contact if there is a problem.
May I ask you a quick question, since you're on this slide? I apologize for interrupting you, but I noticed when I reviewed this packet that July 7 is not on here, but it's also not accepted as a date.
July 7 is not?
July 7 is not, you've, there's a week missing. So I'm just wondering if July 7 is intended to be in the July 2018 plan, or if that's intended to be an exception, because it's not listed in the exceptions.
It is not in the exception, which means that they will, it should be on this.
It should be on the start.
Okay. Okay, so if you do decide to approve it, then it would be the Saturdays, and this would be updated, is basically what would happen. So notice was sent to owners and residents of around 300 feet, which included PPP Avenue 64 and Artistry Apartments. No comments have been received except for an email that was sent today, and you received from Bobby Lee, who is in support for this waiver. In addition, the applicant has conducted three different meetings earlier this year on their own. I was not present, none of the staff members were present, and they can, if you have questions regarding them, you can talk to the applicant. The reason for the request is to accelerate construction schedule. Typically, staff does not recommend approval of a noise waiver request in order to accelerate construction schedule and is therefore recommending denial. However, if after taking public testimony, the council wishes to approve the request, then there is a resolution approving the project, which is attached to the staff report. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer. The applicant is here as well, Mr. Hong, and has a few words to say.
Yes. Before we ask Mr. Hong to show up, is there any, to my right, are there any members who have questions for Miru?
I just, Bobby Lee doesn't seem to be in support. Did I understand you correctly?
I agree with Scott, that I don't believe it's a support letter.
Well, it's a, well, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, if you were to approve, sorry.
Okay.
You're correct.
Any other questions, Scott? On my left, any questions?
No.
Thank you, Miru. Nathan, if you'd like to say some words about your application?
Yeah, thank you.
Could you lift the microphone?
Sure, yeah. Okay, there you go. Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. So as Miru kind of highlighted, we're here to request a noise waiver for work on the Saturdays from 10 to 5. The reason we're really requesting this is that we were severely hampered by the winter, actually not this winter, but the winter before in 2016, when we, you know, effectively pretty much hit that hundred-year storm. And we have been working throughout this past year to really try to catch up, and we just really haven't been able to. We've been able to, to, you know, make decent progress on our concrete work and wood framing work, but just have not been able to catch up. So the weekend work, and I know the way the words are written is accelerate, I mean, the work is really to get ourselves caught up. And by working on these Saturdays, we'll be able to, to pick up a bit of time, and in that respect, to try to make up some time that we've lost. It won't be the most efficient sort of work, but, but at least, you know, it's more than not doing anything. In this effort, we did, as Miru mentioned, we did meet with the community, and we held several community meetings on January 25, on February 3, and February 13. And we met with our neighbors, with the ME and Artistry and Avenue 64, and we sent out invites to the Park Place Plaza as well. When we met, we gave the status of where we were, and we informed everyone that we were intending to, to come and ask the city council for permission. The feedback we got helped kind of guide us, and we totally respect that people wanted to sleep late on Saturdays. So we said 10 o'clock to 10 a.m. to 5 p.m., and that was one of the things that was something to make sure we addressed. The other thing we did hear was that we took some lessons learned from City Center, who we are, actually, as you know, work with them on their project. And they informed us that, you know, one of the big issues was if there's a time to start, that we need to try to make sure we manage that, and so that we're not starting any earlier than that. So one of the things I think I would kind of highlight a little bit more is that, you know, we obviously, as Miru said, we will have a phone number for somebody to call, we'll have somebody available on that. Maybe if it's, I don't want to say it's a modification to the request, but we'd like to get our supervisors to start earlier, say half an hour or so, and 10 a.m., but it's not to do work, but basically just be there on site to help manage and police that effort, so that if any of the subcontractors come earlier, then there's an ability for us to, you know, watch the gates and manage that nobody goes in there earlier and starts hammering away, so that we'd be respectful of the start time. One other thing we did think about, and it's something that I would just, you know, offer, and I don't have details around it, but I think one of the things that we can do is also to try to manage the subcontractors starting early is to penalize them. I mean, if they start earlier, we're going to fine them. And we'll come up with a number that we would fine them, and whatever we collect, it's not to our benefit. What we would think about doing is donating it back to the community in some way, or our neighbors. So I think that was the things that I just kind of wanted to highlight, and maybe just to clarify the work, too, and that Miru did list it out. So most of the work that we're doing on Parcel D will be interior, because as you can tell, the wood framing is up already. So once we get the windows up and enclose the building, most of it is installed in cabinetry and drywall and finishes. Parcel C2, we will have the beginnings of the framing, and so that will be, as we noted, some, you know, saws and sticking up wood frame. So I think probably went past my three minutes, so.
That's okay, you were the applicant. Members, do you have questions? I'll start on my left. Are there questions for Mr. Hong? On my right, are there questions for Mr. Hong? Thank you, Nathan, you can have a seat. Members of the public, this is a public hearing. The time is 8:32. Madam Clerk, the public hearing is open. Members of the public who wish to speak on this application have three minutes to do so. You can just queue behind the first speaker and just stand up and join the line, and we will, we will take them as people approach the podium. First speaker, please speak.
Okay, I'm here speaking on behalf of anybody in Emeryville that uses a wheelchair, who can't speak here tonight, because there's no way for them to be in this room if they're in a wheelchair, because the door doesn't work. You can ask your, Mr. Cloud, your Public Works Director, does the door work? The handicapped access door work? And he'll tell you, no, it does not work.
Mr. Cloud, don't interrupt public comment.
Yes, the door works.
Okay.
Did it work 30 seconds ago?
No, it did not.
Okay, he said, no, it did not. So it's working sometimes?
It has now been repaired.
Okay, it's working sometimes, but it should be working every time.
I need a drink.
It should be working every time, and it's not. Okay. All right, but I appreciate that.
The intermittent door use is not ADA compliant, but I trust Mr. Cloud to fix it for us.
Okay, well, I appreciate that he's, that he's trying to fix it now after a couple of years. All right. Okay, now on to the noise ordinance. So this is, this is an epic day, the red-letter day in Emeryville history, is the first time the staff, Emeryville staff has recommended to not approve a noise ordinance waiver request. The very first time since we've had a noise ordinance in Emeryville. This is the first time. And by the way, I have a public records request outstanding to find out about our noise ordinance waiver, our noise ordinance. How are we doing? How many requests for waivers have we gotten? How many requests have been granted? How many requests has the staff recommended? That's, I'm telling you ahead of time, it's 100%. How many requests has the council granted? And so we're going to find that out, and I'm going to put it in my blog, Emeryville Titleist, for everybody to see, but that's forthcoming. I just put, did a public records request today on that. One thing I wanted to clarify, the staff was wrong when they said that the applicant did, only wants to increase, or just move the schedule forward. In fact, I've got the letter here from Avalon Bay, and they, they have, they did check the rain box, because every developer just about that asks for a noise ordinance waiver always says it's been unusually rainy, and that's why they're behind schedule, and that's why they need a noise ordinance waiver. And this was said by several developers, even during the worst drought in California history. And so, in fact, Avalon Bay did check that box here, and you'll see on the, on the thing it says, unusually heavy rains in 2017. And but just for the record, 2017 was below normal rainfall, but nevertheless. So they did check the rain box, so credit to Avalon Bay for checking the correct box. So the staff was incorrect when they said that they didn't check the, it's been unusually heavy rains, because as you know, every developer that asks for their request comes up here, stands here and says it's been unusually rainy, and that's why I need a noise ordinance waiver. So Avalon Bay did do that, so good on them for that. But I don't think you should give them a noise ordinance waiver, of course. But I do, I am happy to see the staff, for the first time, siding with the people of Emeryville. So I do appreciate that to the staff. Thank you.
I would like to send a copy of the staff report to Mr. Donahue for memento's sake. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Meiling Bedard. I'm a resident of the ME Apartments. And I just wanted to say thank you guys for having this. I'm a new resident of Emeryville, and I'm really excited to see, like, community engagement here. But I'd like to express my concern about the Avalon Bay working on Saturday. I know this might seem kind of petty, but I, my apartment actually faces on the opposite side of Christie Street, so I'm kind of like privy to all the goings-on. And for me, kind of Saturdays, and I think a lot of the people who live on the same side of the building, it's kind of a privacy issue as well. It's kind of nice to have my blinds or windows open on the weekend, or just kind of relax. And it's kind of hard to, I work at it from home on Fridays, so I find the noise on Fridays intrusive, and I think it's kind of nice to have family time or community time on the weekends. So while I respect that the developer kind of wants to make up for lost time, I'm not really sure that that should be on the burden of the rest of the community to kind of bear that noise, and kind of like burden, so to speak, just because the weather was bad. I don't know that that's really fair to the rest of the people involved. But yeah, I just, I would just like to express my concern, because I don't think that it's kind of a great idea for nearby residents. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Next speaker.
My name's Chris, and I'm also a resident at ME Apartments. We were here last year when there was another schedule change to work on Saturdays. I am still strongly against that. My wife works from home. Our weekends are very private. We want to have that time to ourselves. We need to be able to open our windows during the week. We can't open them because of the dust, the dirt. But the main thing is the noise. We're already, this is our second year of construction. We live on the south face of the building, and I look at the park directly under us. I'm also on the construction field, and it has been rainy, but not really that. But I don't see how an extra 48 days needs to be stretched out over a year at my inconvenience, at our inconvenience. The noise is very loud. It doesn't matter what it is. There's been many occasions also, too, that there's been work after hours, there's been equipment picked up after hours, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night. I've had to call the police several times. Trucks have been unloading, loading equipment. There's just a lot of issues that goes with it. You know, it's nice to see something happening, but due to the fact that the store's already backed out, I don't feel that it's right for us to be penalized on the weekends, to extend it. I mean, if they can add 48 days to their construction schedule, I think that would be better than taking a whole year of our weekends. So I really hope that, I was hoping for more people here, but I really hope that you see our sanity. I know a lot of these people don't live there, but it's literally like living in an active work zone daily, and it just can't happen. We need that time for ourselves, so if that has any weight, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Next speaker.
My name is Anna, and I live at ME Apartment Homes. Actually, I remember that a year ago, they had this reasoning that they wanted to open the store by, what, Thanksgiving, and it still hasn't been open, despite the fact that council granted them the waiver, and they were working on Saturdays. So I still don't understand why we're, why we needed to struggle through that if the store still isn't there. And this time, I cannot even believe that they actually do ask for permission for every Saturday for one year. It's like, it seems to be crazy long time. They start construction, which is very loud, really literally at 7 a.m., like, it's extremely loud. So, and I can imagine, like, this being like that, like, on every Saturday, it just seems to be, like, total unacceptable. And to me, the question is, do we want this, like, as a, as a community, right? Do we want these apartments that they're building to be there faster? Of course, it's good for us when we are, like, when there are more people living in Emeryville, and they understand that they bring income and, like, all other benefits. But the question is, like, do we want, as a resident of Emeryville, to pay for that to be done, like, what, two months faster? Well, I don't really think so. So I would really love to hear this, like, not happening, because, I don't know, I cannot live like that. So if that's going to happen every Saturday, I definitely am going to move somewhere, because it's just crazy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Next speaker.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. I am, my name is Emily Ornd, I'm a resident of the Avenue 64 Apartments. So I consider myself lucky that I don't directly abut the, the construction that is underway. So mostly, I'm here to about the noise. The, you know, between having the highway on one side of us and the railroad tracks on the others, there's already a high level of noise, and so noise pollution is a serious problem. By adding those extra days on Saturday, it's not, you're not going to lose any noise if you add 48 days, or however many days it is, on the end of the construction. It's the quality of life that we would experience on our weekends, when many of us are trying to spend the time at home. I also, I'm a recent new addition to the Emeryville area, and coming from a part of the country where the weather sucks, and it's really hard to spend time outside. Living in California has always been a dream, so that I can spend my weekends outside, sitting on my porch, or by the pool, something like that. And that would be far less enjoyable if I was dealing with construction noise every Saturday. So, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Thanks for holding the session. My name is Laura Munoz, and I'm a resident of the Artistry Emeryville. I just strongly really oppose this waiver to be granted. As a resident there, aside from the noise, which I think everybody has already hammered home, there's a lot of road disruptions that happen along with this project, and that blocks off essentially that main street, which is that Shellmount Avenue, and it just prohibits us from going, for example, getting to the public market and stuff. You always have to go roundabout, and that just adds to the congestion that's already on that road, because of the entrance to the Interstate 80. And with the public market now sort of fully functioning, we have an increased volume of people coming by, so you can imagine that's exacerbated on weekends, and with road closures and construction and just extra vehicles on the road, it makes it really unpleasant, aside from the obvious noise that is always already there during the week. So I just would love for you guys to take that into consideration. I also work from home on Fridays and most Saturdays, so just having that constant noise there is just really unpleasant and to have that on weekends when weekends are supposed to be a little sacred, just is really frustrating. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Janab Conde and I'm a resident of Artistry Emeryville. I echo a lot of what has already been said, so I'll just try to like limit it to new points. One is that I noticed that Avalon Bay talked about like a flyer or email that they sent to us, so I checked, I didn't remember that. And the email was sent January 31st about a meeting on February 3rd, but didn't make explicit what it was about. It was just about the timeline and I think had it been made more clear that there was a possibility of Saturday work for a year, I and probably more people would have attended. And the only other point I have to add is that I'm a law student and this is final, so coming here for more than an hour and a half means that this is really important to me, so I hope you'll take that to consideration. So I oppose this noise waiver. Thanks.
I completely understand the law finals. Welcome.
My name's Peter and I live in Bridgewater and I want to say I oppose this. The noise, you guys have been hearing it, but it is so loud. So like basically every morning at 7:00. So I have two windows, right, because of the railway. So there's two windows. I use earplugs and I have a noisemaker going. And every morning I hear boom, 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 boom! And it goes like that for two or three hours until I go to work, right? My wife, she's pregnant, so she struggles with it because you know, she's like having erratic patterns with the baby and stuff like that. So our weekends are the only time we can rest, right? I actually would like it if, even on the weekdays, the construction would actually start at 10:00. Because every morning 7:00, it's like boom, 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 boom! And it just literally sounds like trucks are falling on top of trucks and hammers are banging and it's so loud. And I understand that's part of the construction. I mean, we live, you know, facing it, but I mean, weekends, you can't do this to us. Yeah, I implore you, please do not do that. Please oppose this and thank you. And I think a couple of weeks ago, you also came by Bridgewater to give a talk. That was very helpful, separate issue, but thank you, so.
You're welcome, Peter, and thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Seeing none. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, the time is 8:46. The public hearing is closed. We'll bring it back for discussion. I would like to begin with Member Donahue.
There's just so many issues that are complicated by this possible noise waiver. I, you know, I think, well, how could it be done? Well, even if it's just installing cabinetry with windows already in the place, the problem is the average cabinet installer would open the windows. So, you know, it's just, I just can't see supporting this. It's just, it's too close. The other thing we approved was at least had a building between the work they were doing and the residence. This has nothing. This is directly across from the residence. So I don't see a way to have the sound in any way adjudicated. So I just can't see granting this.
Thank you, Member Donahue. Member Pats?
So I have some concerns about it starting, it shouldn't be starting at 7:00 AM already. Did I not hear that from?
The, the-
No, I understand. The current weekday construction I'm hearing is starting early.
Oh, I see what you're saying, sorry.
Yeah, and I'm, am I wrong and that's too early for it to start?
That's the, that's what the noise-
That's what the noise ordinance says, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Except for pile driving and other similarly loud noise, which is limited to 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Right, thank you. So yeah, you know, the purpose of the noise waiver is to give people their weekends and, you know, we have here a group of people saying that's exactly what they want, so the purpose of the noise ordinance is just that. I'm not in support of this waiver.
Okay, Member Martinez?
Sometimes we need to grant noise waivers, but this application is for too long of a time. It's not specific enough. I did think to myself, maybe there's an exception we can make for interior work only, but there need to be deliveries for interior work to happen. And there need to be, you know, you say there are going to be 30 to 50 people on site. They all need to park their cars. They all need to be there and be making noise on people's weekends. And excess noise, as the public have stated, it's a health issue. It's a mental health issue. And I am not in support of granting this waiver at this time. I do want to say that if you were to come back and you had a specific need to pour concrete or something that is extremely timely, that needs to happen on a weekend for a specific reason, I think we could reasonably consider that. But if we were to grant this waiver, I think not only would we do harm to the neighborhood, but we'd set a very bad precedent for people developing in Emeryville in the future. We only have one square mile, so you're somebody's neighbor when you're building here. So I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
I would like to start by thanking all of you who took the time out of your evenings to come out here. Your concerns are not petty. They do hold weight for us. The noise ordinance was created to protect our residents and I greatly appreciate all of you taking the time to come out here because I know it's been a while. You've had to wait. I listen to your concerns. I'm going to, you know, I cannot support this for the same reasons I couldn't support the last request. It is, residents have come out saying it is a significant problem to their quality of life and so I will not be supporting this.
This time I'll entertain a motion. Actually, well, Charlie, do we have to adjudicate it because it's technically an application?
Well, you don't have to. I mean, you could take a vote to deny it, but we wouldn't, I mean, the resolution before you is to support it. If you denied it, it would just be by motion. Or you could just not.
Deny it by motion? We do require a motion.
If we do nothing, nothing happens.
For the record, I would prefer if you adopted a motion to deny the request.
I'll move to deny the request.
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Donahue to deny the application for a noise waiver. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, the application is denied. Item 12. Item 12.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville approving a facade improvement grant award and authorizing the city manager to execute facade improvement grant contracts with the grant awardees. And I believe Emmy is doing this one. Hello?
Good evening, and Mayor Bowers and members of council. So staff is pleased to bring forward an initiative that was started with council in your policies for supportive of small business in the community. We've had a facade grant program in the past and it was well received and really addressed a lot of problematic issues with dilapidated buildings and their facades. We looked at the background of the program and then existing conditions. And when we brought forward the grant program to council most recently, it was renewed to expand the program to consider more than just skin deep needs, but interior improvements that were visible, permitting issues that were providing the impediment to businesses expanding or moving to Emeryville. And so this is kind of the renewed program that council adopted. And this is the first round that we're happy to present to council. There are several members of the business community here who have been, had their applications reviewed by the Economic Development Advisory Committee, who made recommendations that are in your staff report tonight. Just as a reminder of the background of what was approved in the updated program was to look at upgrading dilapidated buildings and again, more than just the facade. To encourage us businesses to occupy vacant commercial buildings and that was the emphasis. Eligible improvements were to include exterior and highly visible interior improvements and the other changes that came into play were a split match arrangement removed in maximum of 75% or $75,000. There used to be a rule about first come, first served and this was eliminated in favor of a competitive process. And then the Economic Development Advisory Committee was to review the approvals, which they did and the recommendation is before you this evening. So we opened the first round in October of 2017. It's taken us some time to get it to council because we needed to get quite a bit of information, some background studies, some cost analyses, et cetera, before we could really have substantive information to provide EDAC to make an analysis of the different proposals. And then let's see what else. So just to clarify, if eligible requests exceeded funding, which it did in this case, this was really a well-received program. It's wanted in the community, it's needed in the community. We had over $600,000 worth of proposals. We have $200,000 to spend. So it's really oversubscribed. We suspect we may be asked to do another round in the future. And there were some difficult decisions that EDAC had made about suggesting eliminating certain programs in favor of other ones that would provide the greatest impact on economic development for the community. Those items that they looked at most closely were the length of the lease term, meaning that if someone was in a lease, the longer the lease was, we felt like the more that they would be invested in the community. The length type of the, time of the property has been vacant. It's been vacant for quite some time. It's obvious that the property, a business owner or a business owner is having difficulty renting the property to businesses. And then greatest building improvements. And again, I spoke to the building program being over, or the facade program being oversubscribed and the need to score the applications, which we did according to the criteria that council reviewed with the facade grant program. And the EDAC, when they reviewed it, considered that. And they considered that if partial awards were made to a greater number of applicants, that it could result in some of the programs not moving forward because they just couldn't get off the ground. I want to remind council that these awards are reimbursement based. So this helps ensure that the programs or projects actually happen. The applicant has to do the work and then they could submit the request for refund of whatever the permitting fees were or the construction costs were. And the specific nature of what they could possibly be awarded would be in their specific contract. Consequently, EDAC settled on a compromise recommendation that partially funded the top five scoring application as follows. These included three sites that are located in the Park Business Center. This is a large development with multiple businesses that are underutilized because there's been ongoing seismic issues. And discussing this matter with our building division, we found that there was another site in town, I believe it was Semi Freddy's, if I remember the name correctly, that had extensive seismic issues and it was preventing development of the site. And so what they had them do was a seismic plan of what to do with the upgrades and identify phasing that would allow things to move forward step by step. This site in particular is within the Park Avenue area plan. And this is meant to be a place where the street is really activated with robust business and is a place where the community gathers along Park Avenue. And so in addition to the considerations about the underutilization of the site, there are many uses that can't go beyond just storage, where there should be able to be dance studios and restaurants, offices and other uses at this site that cannot be there because of the seismic issues. That would help be addressed with these grants. Another significant project is the Dante Commercial. If you walk in the area where Dante Commercial sites are, they're vacant largely. And this has been for, since the building was constructed. It has, I would say, almost full tendency with regard to residential, but the commercial just hasn't developed. And so they had some issues that just make the place uninviting for some businesses and this would help them kind of reignite interest in the site. Fantasy Junction is a small business, or I should say, the building is a small business. It's well-known. But they do have some masonry issues. So this is one that was more like the traditional facade grant program where there was dilapidated building issues. And they would like to update the site to include paint, masonry repair and landscaping along the street right away. And so basically, this is what was being proposed in a nutshell. And staff, or I should say, not staff, but Economic Development Advisory Committee is recommending that council approve the facade improvement grant awards as recommended and that you authorize the city manager to execute the facade grant contracts with the grant awardees. And if you have any questions as staff at this time, we'd be pleased to answer them.
Members, are there questions on my left? On my right? Member Martinez?
So the concentration of businesses in the Park Avenue District, was this discussed by the committee and were they, was the thought of diversifying neighborhoods addressed?
I believe what the concern was, was looking at the criteria. It was really an objective approach that they took. They took the specific scoring criteria that were in the guidelines and they didn't really look at geographic issues other than the facade grant program has specific geographic areas identified where the grants are possible. And those are generally along the commercial corridors and the areas where significant structures are, significant buildings, I should say. That was an addition that council did with this latest iteration. And so really, this is a result of specific scoring that really, so they didn't go and look at the map and say, okay, we have 10 applications and we want to scatter them throughout the community. They really looked at the criteria itself. What would be the greatest economic benefit to the community and not just fiscal economic community benefits, but one of the main criteria was the building status. And we had our building division involved in making comments on the application and they were concerned about not only the, you know, from a planning perspective or economic development perspective, it was more about economic development, but from building, it was more about public safety. And these are really concerns that they thought needed to be addressed in as soon as possible.
Member Donahue, you have a question?
I have some basic conceptual questions. I-
Can you get closer to your microphone so everyone can hear you? Sorry.
These properties have owners and the owners cannot afford to do the seismic upgrade. Is that what I'm hearing? They don't, they would rather keep the building empty than complete a seismic upgrade? Is that part of the issue?
Part of the issue is that with regard to the, you know, these are more than just the Park Avenue Business Center, but those are three of the five that are being recommended. It's a large, it basically takes up the whole block between Emery and Watts, Park to 40th. It's business, commercial condominiums. So no one, business owner or property owner owns the whole block. And yet, because the buildings are tied in together, there's a comprehensive issue, seismically speaking, that needs to have a comprehensive seismic study done. And that's why one of the applicants, the Park Avenue Business Center, this is an association, a business association for the overall site, they're one of the main applicants. And so the other projects really we want, would want, or the building division would like to see the seismic study done for the overall building and then with some phasing identified. And that, in that phasing, they also want them specifically to look at the two projects that they're recommending move forward. So the issue is not just property owners not doing their due of maintaining their properties, but there's an overall issue that they're having to work with a whole bunch of other property owners trying to work together and then address this larger issue that really needs a larger study to deal with it.
Okay, and these properties are currently leased and that's a part of this, that they have ongoing tenants, is that correct?
Some of them do not. For example, in Farrelly's property and the seismic upgrade she's proposing, part of her issue with her property is she's having vacancies because she's not able to get the building permits to deal with tenant improvements even if she wanted to because the overall seismic study needs to be done, because the building division is just not willing to move forward with improvements on anywhere of these business sites until that seismic study is done. So it's really not the property owner's fault that they're not improving their properties per se. It needs to be this larger group that is taking care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Emmy. This time I'm going to call for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on this proposal or the applications will be afforded three minutes to comment. Any members of the public wish to comment at this time? It's your chance to- There's your chance to approach the podium and tell council why they should or should not approve this. Going once. Going twice. Public comment is closed and we'll bring it back for discussion. And I will ask Member Martinez if she'd kick us off.
I think this is a great program. I actually appreciate all of the thought that was put into the scoring process. I do think that this will come back, and I would hope that next time around, we also consider the geographic diversity of the applications. But at this time, I'm ready to support this, the staff recommendation.
Member Donahue?
I can appreciate that seismic studies not being done can prevent property from being occupied. And if these studies were done and upgrades were made, businesses could put their improvements in, and we'd have more places for small business, especially in these kinds of buildings. So I'm ready to support this.
Member Pats?
So I had the privilege of sitting at the EDAC committee council and watching the discussion on this. And it was really thoughtful and well-considered. And I really appreciated the work. And I want to thank both staff, but more importantly, the EDAC members who put the time in and really had thoughtful discussions. And I, the location was not an issue, it was the quality of the applications. And I agree with you, that could be a criteria going forward, or should be a criteria going forward. But it really was looking at bang for the buck. And then they really spent a lot of time, because the first three, the top three applicants were going to eat up the entire budget. And to watch that process is they wanted to be more inclusive and make sure that they could fund as much as possible. So I fully support the decisions they came to and support approving this. And I agree with Member Martinez. This is something we'll want to revisit in the future and continue this program.
Member Medina?
I'd like to thank the members of EDAC and Emmy and Councilmember Pats for serving as a liaison to that committee and putting all this work into providing us with these excellent recommendations, which I plan on supporting.
Okay, I have a few comments. So I really want to commend Member Martinez for noticing something I was looking at too at first, which was the geographic location. I'm supportive of the staff recommendation. I have one question before I finish my comments. But, you know, doing an analysis of the structures in the community that need improvements, they're concentrated in this neighborhood. And in fact, all but two of the applications are from essentially a four-block area. And so, you know, I would just, if we want to discuss geographic diversity in the future, I'm happy to hear council is supportive of this program. This was a program I was very supportive of last year and I continue to be. And I think we should, as Councilmember Pats, I think aptly said, the biggest bang for the buck is really what we're trying to go for. And I would note, I've been to most of the buildings on here. I used to live in the Bessler Building, right behind us here. That's where I moved when I moved here. And the, the units that compromise the Park Business Center have a very unique set of, you know, potential uses. They are very diverse, like it really offers this neighborhood the opportunity to be a unique and dynamic business community and to provide a level of neighborhood feel that does not currently exist. To have some of the small businesses we talked about tonight, it really, like you could have all of that literally in a two-block area in this neighborhood. So I think this is a very well-reasoned proposal and recommendation from the committee. I want to thank the committee. I want to thank Councilmember Pats for his time on this. My only question is this, the only one that kind of strikes me, and just show of hands, is anybody here from Andante? No. So Andante is the only one that I don't understand, to be honest with you. And I was wondering maybe before we vote, just to satisfy me, because I'm curious, if you could come back up, Emmy, I didn't plan on asking a question, but I do think I have a question about this. I am not clear where all this landscaping and lighting, because to me, unless I'm wrong, the commercial component of Andante is what we see between 3800 and 4,000 San Pablo. Is that correct?
There's a portion of it that faces the, I'm trying to remember, this 40th. Yeah. And that, so what we are going to suggest, because they
Behind the bus stop?
They're having issues in that they had landscaping installed there to begin with as part of the initial development. And they've had considerable issues with the homeless, frankly, urinating and killing the plants. And they've had a program of trying to replace the plants. And so they wanted to do some improvements to some gates and to their landscaping and some lighting, they felt that would help make it less welcoming and also for security for that area. And so that was part of the proposal.
Charlie, you wish to add on?
Along 40th Street, it's just the Japanese restaurant that faces 40th.
Meozan, right?
But then there's the parking garage that's to the east of that. And I believe the first floor of the parking garage is commercial. It's for the retail tenants. So it could be considered part of the commercial development.
So, I mean, Meozan has its own application. So I, you know, now I have a few more questions. Because now I'm going to want to walk myself away from what I previously said. But I'm not clear, because we have an appropriation of $30,000 and there could be more money given to these other applications in theory. And I just want to be really clear, like what is the money going to? Because, you know, if there's a persistent landscaping problem and we're going to give them $5,000 and it's going to be worthless in a year, you know, maybe there's another mitigation that's needed and that's maybe appropriate. But I'm just trying to figure out, reading this application, safety lighting and gate replacement, I mean, are we talking about the gate between, on San Pablo, between 40th and the 3990 shop that's vacant? Is that what we're talking about? I mean, you've read the application, staff, so I don't know who can tell me what this application is. Maybe Member Pats, you remember? I don't remember. No?
No.
So I was hoping someone was here, because I didn't really, the applications weren't provided in the packet. And I'm not clear, this is a lot of money for something that is essentially street-facing retail with just a sidewalk. So I'm concerned about the amount for this one.
So one of the things, they may have asked for more improvements than what was recommended by EDAC. For example, in the last column of the scoring sheet, it says funding to be used for. So this would be a condition of approval that would limit the scope of what they could use the money for. They had specifically asked for landscaping at the street, landscaping on the interior. They had asked for lighting. They wanted to upgrade their gate so that it could be closed during the day, but have a buzzer installed essentially, so someone going to a business didn't have to call them, they could be buzzed in. And then the lighting that they felt would help address the issues with the homeless and the damage and vandalism that was happening to the streetscape. And so the specific funding limitations were to eliminate any use of the funds for interior of the site and have them at the exterior where it would be limited to landscaping and signage installations. They have a sign program, but they have it installed, the sign program. And then for the lighting, which is another consideration, and related permit fees.
Am I the only one? Do any of the members have thoughts on this one?
I actually, you know, I looked fondly on this application because it wasn't in the Park Avenue district. And I wanted to see applications that weren't. As a resident of the Triangle neighborhood, I've noticed that Andante is taking an interest in trying to improve the landscaping recently. So I'd like to think that these improvements won't be wasted and they'll be leveraged against the new business that we know is coming to Andante, which is New Leaf. And there have been improvements in recent history that I've noticed as someone who walks in that neighborhood. And I feel they're instituting a lot of those on their own. And I think this is a good gesture to try to support the rest of those vacant units. I'd love to see businesses in all of those empty spaces. And if this is a step towards helping that, I think, you know, just as it, it would be great to see more businesses in the Park Business Center with very diverse uses, I think that we should be supporting that happening on San Pablo as well.
I have no more comments. Thank you.
Okay.
At this time, is there more comments? Member Pats?
I would like to move the item.
Okay, we have a motion for Member Pats.
Second?
And a second for Member Martinez. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item 12.2 is direction on the investment policy for the pension trust and a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adopting the public agency's post-employment benefits trust administered by Public Agency Retirement Systems, or PARs, for pre-funding pension liabilities, appointing the city manager as the plan's administrator for the program, and authorizing the city manager as plan administrator for the program to execute a PARs agreement with other administrative documents. Hi, Susan.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The Budget Advisory Committee met in April to discuss the investment strategies for the city's Section 115 Pension Trust. As described in the staff report, the committee recommended a moderately conservative strategy, utilizing an active investment strategy for equity and a customized strategy for fixed income. Dennis Yu?
Did I say correctly?
Yeah. From PARs, and Randy Yurchak from Highmark will explain how this investment strategies work and the process for setting up a trust. Dennis is the executive vice president for PARs, and Randy is the vice president and portfolio manager for Highmark. Now I will turn it over to Dennis. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Dennis.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name again is Dennis Yu, Executive Vice President with PARs. And back in March of 2018, I presented at a study session to this council, the benefits of utilizing a Section 115 trust fund to address your growing CalPERS liabilities and to try to help smooth out the future cost increases that you're going to be seeing over the next five to seven years. The action before you this evening would be the first step that you would take to establish the trust. You would give authorization to the city manager to execute documents to implement the program. It typically takes about 15 to 30 days to set up the trust program. Once the council does adopt the program, previous guidance from the council stated that approximately $9.6 million would be allocated to this trust fund. We would recommend that the contributions be made over a 90-day period. Potentially, the city could make four contributions over that 90-day period in amounts of $2.4 million to help to dollar-cost average the contributions so that you don't just invest the whole $9.6 million on one particular day. And so the goal would be probably by August or so, the entire amount, the entire $9.6 million would be invested in the trust program. As Susan mentioned, the Budget Advisory Committee is recommending a particular investment strategy. And I'm going to turn it over to Randall Yurchak from Highmark Capital Management, and he can go over the details of that particular strategy.
Thank you, Dennis.
Councilmembers, Mayor, Randy Yurchak from Highmark Capital. Just briefly speak to the investment strategy, moderately conservative, what was selected. The strategy is 20% to 40% equities with a midpoint of 30% average over the long term, and 60%, 80% fixed income, averages about 70% over the long term. So you can expect to see modest increase in capital over time, with the more principal component being preservation of principal and growth of income. To speak to the, to speak to how we will manage the equity component, we will be using active managers. So these managers are tasked with exceeding the benchmark return. We have an internal manager research group that identifies these active managers, and we employ these into the plan. And then for the fixed income portion, we will be using our actually internal fixed income department at Highmark, who will actually be the one selecting the fixed income securities for the plan. So that pretty much wraps it up. Do you have any questions?
Okay. So Susan, is there any other presentation beyond Randy and Dennis? No. Members, I'll start on my left. Are there questions for Randy or Dennis? On my right? No, thank you. You can have a seat. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item will be afforded three minutes to do so. Any members? No? Seeing none. We'll bring it back for discussion. I'll ask to start with Member Martinez.
So I am, I am progressive and liberal in my social issues, and I'm conservative, I think fiscally. So I think I am supportive of the committee and staff recommendation in this case.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, this is something that I think is a smart move for our city and look forward to it.
Okay, Member Pats?
I'd echo those same sentiments.
Member Donahue?
When I look at this curve here on the five different investment strategies, conservative is the least risk, and of course, the least reward. But the line curves up, but stays pretty steep by moderately conservative, looks like not that much risk, but much greater reward in relation to moderate or, I mean, the risk and reward ratios seem best at moderately conservative. Is that chart, do you think, accurate? I mean, you know, I see risk, but there's no parsing of risk down there with any kind of numbers. Would you address the accuracy of this chart on Q4 2017?
You have to do it at the microphone, please, for the public at home. Thank you.
It's more of a graphical representation about what you'd expect to see with the different investment objectives. So the return is the, excuse me, the return is, just want to make sure I reference this accurately. So the return is the vertical line, obviously, and the horizontal line is the risk. So certainly, as you, as you add more risk into the portfolio or stocks, which to be candid, it's stocks that are adding the risk to the portfolio, you will see a pop-up in return. And it just, it depends on what assumptions you use and the inputs you use to get that curve.
But I mean, this is a fanciful graph, not an accurate graph?
It's not, not accurate down to the last numeric value. It graphically represents what you expect to see.
Do you have any more comments or questions?
No.
No, you're good with that? Okay. So I have a few comments. I want to thank the Budget Advisory Committee. We had a nice chat with Dennis and Highmark and some other folks and Susan for your work on this. And, you know, poring over investment strategies, coming from being a broke nonprofit employee, was a very, was an educational experience. Benay Curtis Bauer should get a lot of credit for really hammering us down on, yes, Benay is amazing, just on the difference between customizing and index investments. I like had a notepad by the time I was done, full of notes. This, we do have, for the folks at home, this $9.6 million is part of taking the budget plan from last year and assigning this general unassigned revenue, general fund unassigned, to essentially a local investment strategy to hopefully beat the market a little bit and beat CalPERS for sure on this investment. PARs has done an excellent job in a lot of jurisdictions managing this. And I believe Highmark will do a great job. Their, their investment plans have been demonstrated to exceed index plans. And so I think this is the right way for us to go. And I'm very grateful to council for supporting this. And a customized fixed income strategy for the fixed income component, which is the majority of this investment, is going to be great. And the fact that we made the investment level we did is what allows us to do that. Because if we had made, what, $5 million or below, it wouldn't have probably been, you know, courted for that type of opportunity. So I just really strongly endorse this. And I think this is just a reminder to Emeryville employees who work with the city, but also to taxpayers, that this is an example of government making a very prudent investment with money. And this is an investment that I just want to say, most cities are not in our position to do right now. And so, you know, people, people can say what they want about Emeryville for one reason or another, but we have managed our finances in an excellent manner. We have managed debt service in an excellent manner. We have shored up reserves and funds to weather economic changes in a very prudent manner. And I'm grateful to you, Mr. Reuter, and to Benay, and to Fran, and to Nat, and to Miru on the Budget Advisory Committee. It is still my favorite committee in the city. Committee. It is still my favorite committee in the city. And with that, if members would tolerate it, I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendation for this pension.
I'll second it.
I'll tolerate it.
Thank you for tolerating it. That was aimed for you, for what a remark. So motion by Mayor Bowders and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Thank you all for coming and staying until the late time, and thank you, Susan, and I look forward to this investment being in place by the end of summer. In fact, we have a report back on how we did when we come back in September. That'd be great. Okay, 13 is Department Head Reports. We'll start with Charlie Bryant.
All right. Mayor Bowders, members of the city council, this is my report to you on the last regular meeting of the Planning Commission, which was held last Thursday, April 26th. I would note that the appeal deadline for that meeting is next Friday, May 11th. And of course, if the council wishes to appeal any of these items to yourself, this would be the time to do that. There were three public hearings on the agenda. I would also note that Chair Donaldson had an excused absence, and we have one vacancy on the commission currently. So there were five commissioners present. The first item, the tanium signs at 2100 Powell Street, was approved on a vote of four to one. The no vote was Commissioner Kang. He indicated that he was supportive of the application and he would be...he would plan to approve it at a future meeting, but he wanted them to have done more outreach to the residents of Pacific Park Plaza. And for that reason, he did not support approving it at last week's meeting. The other commissioners were not so concerned about that and voted to approve it. The AT&amp;T Small Cell Wireless Facility adjacent to 1411 Powell Street was approved on a five to nothing vote. And the East Bay Therapeutics Cannabis Retail Dispensary was also approved on a five to nothing vote. As you know, the parking management plan was not...that was a study session. That was not heard at the April 26th meeting, but has been continued to a special meeting of the Planning Commission, which will be held on Thursday, May 17th at 6:30 p.m. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Let's start. Member Donahue, do you have questions or items you wish to pull?
No.
Member Martinez?
Nope.
Member Medina?
Nope.
Member Pats? I just have a question, Charlie, and you know which one it's going to be probably. And don't worry, it's not East Bay Therapeutics. I see you in the audience. You're safe. No, it's A. I just have a question about A, which is, so the tanium signs have to deal with...is the 2100 Powell Street sign program the same as the towers sign program?
No, and 2100 Powell Street does not have a master sign program.
So can you just provide...and I know everyone's cringing in Planning Commission world when I say these things, but this is my, like, issue. I've just always hated lit high-rise signs. I think they're just terrible personally.
What a life.
So, yeah, there's a problem. So anyways, my question is, what was the size, and is there an illumination time at which they go off, or are they dim below a certain percent?
I can't tell you the exact size off the top of my head. I can tell you that high-rise identification signs are limited to two per high-rise building, and they are limited to no larger than 1% of the area of the facade on which they are attached. And this sign is less than 1%. There's two signs, one at the north and one at the south.
North and east. We're doing north and south.
North and south. It's where the art.com signs used to be. Art.com signs used to be. So they are no larger than 1% of the area on which they're...of the facades on which they're to be located. They're a little bit less than 1%. Concerning the illumination, there is no set time for the signs to go on or off, although they did indicate that they will not be illuminated during the daytime, which was a concern to the one speaker who did appear from Pacific Park Plaza. However, we did include the condition of approval that if they're determined to be too bright, they must be dimmable. And if they're determined to be too bright, they shall be dimmed to my satisfaction until I determine that they're not too bright. They did have a sample. They had a little light box there that was about, I guess, about a foot square or so. And it was the actual face of the sign, which is red. And they had a dimmer on the light box, and they showed the commission the sign or, you know, the sample at full brightness, and then they turned it down to half brightness. And the commission was satisfied with that.
And it says tanium?
Uh huh. Yes. I would note also...
All right, please note, please note. Go ahead.
I would also note that Pacific Park Plaza is not within 300 feet of this building. So it falls beyond the normal notification radius. It's about 500 or 600 feet away. But we have a standard procedure based on our previous experience with high-rise signs on the peninsula, that any of the five high-rise buildings on the peninsula, if a high-rise sign is proposed, Pacific Park Plaza is always notified. There's roughly 600, a little over 600 units in Pacific Park Plaza. We notified all of them. One resident came to the public hearing.
Was it Paul?
Yes, it was.
And he was...his concern was that it was lit during the day?
That was one of his concerns, and the commission was assured by the applicants that they did not intend to have it lighted during the day.
Is there a condition of approval that says with hours it's lit?
No. There's just a condition that says it has to be dimmable, and it shall be dim to my satisfaction if I determine it's too bright.
If you have like one to this bright, like, what's your satisfaction?
My satisfaction is if somebody complains, my satisfaction is their satisfaction. Sign illumination...
Paul never felt that way. So with...here's the thing, like, my experience on the Planning Commission is that this is like a third rail over there for some people. And there was no other color. Is it branding issue why it's red?
Yes. Yes, that's the...and actually...
That's their actual color of their logo?
Yes. And I would note that the commissioners actually felt that red was...after they saw the lighted box, they felt that red was better than white.
Here, I've got a picture of their logo for you.
Yeah. I just remember being in Paul's unit and having Paul tell me that he felt like he lived in a brothel because of the red light when art.com was lit. So I'm just...I'm having...I'm very concerned about passing the opportunity to do this.
I don't think that might have been before the...
That was before the second change.
Right, because the approved colors after that did not include red.
Let me ask my colleagues. Is anybody interested in reviewing this or no?
Not super, no.
No?
I'm intrigued, but...
Stop. Don't do that.
Okay, I don't hear a majority of people saying that they're interested in reviewing it. But I want to go on record just saying that I think that the...that high-rise signs are damaging to the environment. They're damaging to endangered bird species, and we have a bird habitat at the estuary. They are actually red light in particular, and ultraviolet purple lights are damaging to the sleep patterns of children. They...those lights can actually filter through the eyelids of children, and it disrupts deep REM sleep. So I have never been a fan of high-rise lit signs, mostly because I believe that they create environmental health problems for humans and animals. But I don't hear...and I'm not pressuring anyone to do it. I'm not going to make a motion to appeal this. But I just want to be on record about it because I was on the Planning Commission, you know, and I still remain opposed, and I think we need to review the high-rise sign ordinance. So...
If I may, Mayor, yeah, I'm not interested in nitpicking this particular sign. However, I am willing to address with you the issue of high-rise signs and the real health impacts.
Right. Well, once it's up, it's there.
It's there.
It's there. So I mean, that's why this is like the challenge for me is to, you know...
And we can't just put a time limit on it. This way, we'd have to reopen the whole thing.
No. Well, no, 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 no. It's like, once it's approved, it's a condition of approval that's permanent unless they choose to take it down. So that was the art.com problem. And so you can say more, Charlie. Go ahead.
Well, the art.com problem is that we did not include any condition about the sign being dimmable. So we did...we had...when we got complaints about the brightness of the sign, and I don't know how many of you remember when that sign went up, it was blinding. We had no recourse. We had no condition to hang our hat on because we didn't put a dimmer condition in it for whatever reason. And I reminded the commission about that, and they were satisfied with this condition.
So the last two signs that we dealt with when I was on the commission were the Stanford Health sign and the Griffles sign. And both of those, we had conditions that they went off. Griffles goes off at 8:00 p.m., and Stanford, I believe, goes off at 8:00 p.m. Those are not high-rises, technically speaking, under the definition of a high-rise, you know. And I understand that the art.com building, unlike the Hilton or unlike, you know, 1900 Powell, do not face straight at PPP essentially the same way. They're not oriented the same way. I'm going to let go of this. I just...I think that this is...to me, this is a travesty for urban communities, is that suburban communities that have like, you know, Taco Bell and other things on the side of the road have these big lit signs at night. The purpose of lighted signs historically is that they're designed to be a navigation point for people who are on freeways to find hotels, late-night restaurants, and medical facilities. That was the purpose of signs that were put up in the sky at night, was to identify things. We've turned it into it's now anything. And I think that we not...we talked about noise pollution tonight. I just personally think that light pollution is another major problem in the community. And I wish we would more proactively address it. So for another day. But at this time, if there's no more items, we'll move on.
I'll say one last thing. I...sorry, I was cracking up during the Bordello comment because I just watched Enter the Void where the whole thing is about how he's looking at this giant neon sign is all I can think about this whole time. Do we still have the authority to then pass an ordinance that would require all high-rise signs to turn off at a certain time, or are we just like toasted once we allow this?
Well, all the high-rise signs are under master sign plans except this one, and this one is now being approved. Is that correct?
So we can't touch it now?
No, there's someone else who's not under the plan?
The Marketplace Office Tower is a high-rise, technically. It's got some signs on it. I think the Marriott Courtyard is a high-rise. It's got signs at the top. In fact, I believe the three towers on the peninsula, well, Hilton Garden Inn, that's another high-rise.
Right. But my opinion has always been that hotels is a reason why you have a sign, right? And so that's because people are supposed to find a place to sleep at night.
The only high-rises that I'm aware of that have a master sign program are those three towers.
Okay.
I've got an idea. We could ask to form an ad hoc committee where in the next...until our limit, you can power us to reach out to tanium and get an agreement for them to turn off their sign at a certain time at night.
I think we're probably too far down the road for that, actually. So I'm going to move on unless somebody wants to hear this, but that's okay.
I'm fine.
Thank you for humor in those comments, Charlie. I know it makes you nervous whenever I talk about signs. Do you have any other items to report, Charlie?
No.
Andrew, do you have anything?
Yes, I'd just like to say the City of Emeryville, the Public Works Department, and the Public Works Director all take ADA access very seriously, and that this building, the repairs were made some months ago, and we just had a little electronic problem this evening, and it's working just fine. And I had checked it actually earlier this evening and noticed that it was not working. So the statements earlier were correct, but it's fixed. And it's a balance between building security and ADA access, as we have to shift from the access from the main building to this building in the evening. And so everything is on a timer. So basically, the timer was...had expired.
Well, thank you for fixing that for us, Andrew. I appreciate your time.
Your city attorney was actually on the job.
What?
Multitalented.
Okay, well, we appreciate you, city attorney. You have a part-time job now. Police or fire, do either of you have Department Head Reports?
No.
No?
Good.
No? Okay. And anyone over here on my right? No? Okay. Future agenda item requests, are there any? Member Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I was...in addition to Mr. Frickie, I've been contacted by phone, in person, and by email by members of the community who are looking to address traffic calming in the Emeryville Triangle. So I wanted to talk to you folks and see if, you know, there are a couple ways we could approach this. We could have the Public Works and Transportation Committee talk about it specifically, or we could do what Mr. Frickie was suggesting, which is put this on the next city council agenda.
So are you making...do you have a specific?
I'm open about how to proceed. The more I think about it, I think it's a little rush to get it onto the next city council agenda. Like, I understand that it's a very...it's nice to put a bow on things and have data from 10, whatever, 11 years ago compared with data today. However, we didn't have the traffic circles at that time. So it's...to me, it's apples and oranges. So I'd rather have the...I think that now that I've had time to think about it, I think I'd rather have the community address, open it up and start discussing it and find the smartest way to go, and then have it come back to council.
How do others feel? Member Medina?
You know, as a council, we had a pretty exhaustive priority-setting process, so has BPAC. And this has not come up at all. And I can tell you that in terms of public safety concerns, where we look like where our traffic accidents are and collisions, they're not there. That it's not an immediate public safety threat. So if we're going to talk about database policymaking, I don't feel like immediately rushing to address a non-problem is that. So I'm not particularly interested in addressing it at this time when we have many other pressing public works issues that us as a council and the community as a whole has given input on to.
Okay. Any...Member Pats, do you have a comment on that? Member Donahue?
The...I like the overall plan, and I can imagine having the diverters as the original plan had would be an attractive thing for living in the triangle and reducing cut-through traffic. And it's...I see it as maybe a slam dunk with the residents in the triangle wanting it.
Do you want to study this? I want to make sure we don't have a discussion.
Well, I'm willing to take it up at the Transportation Public Works Committee, just talk about it, see what we get about it. You know, we can probably fit it in there. I think that's a good place to start talking about it.
So I'm aligned with Member Medina. I do not think we should spend time on this. Mr. Frickie had a very curt email when I explained that to him. But I agree with Member Medina. We just set all the goals and priorities. We just told staff what we want them to work on and study. We have been, you know, pursuing the railroad. We have all kinds of staff effort being put into place right now on the parking management system. We're going to have a number of ballot measures that are going to require staff time. And whether it's...it's absolutely not appropriate right now for a council agenda. I don't think it's appropriate for a member of the community to come in and say, "I've been calling and asking for, you know, price quotes and things like that, and that you should do this, you know, immediately, essentially." I don't doubt that there is a...something worth evaluating, and I've expressed that to Mr. Frickie. And I don't have any problem with him wanting to improve his neighborhood. I think that the presumption that we should drop everything we're doing, that is the problem that the city council had for years, was that the city council kept dropping a ball to pick up another ball. And we made the right decision in setting a set of priorities. I think staff is very aligned with the priorities we've set. They're working on them. I mean, we just got money for the train crossings. We're actually moving in the right direction on this, and we can deliver outcomes. And so I'm not opposed to having a conversation about Mr. Frickie's ask at the appropriate time when we have taken things off the goal list, because I also don't believe in developing policy around single incidents and using a single incident, which albeit is a bad one. And even if it was two of them, as he mentioned, I mean, we just had a car accident in front of City Hall today that took out a whole ton of Ford Go bikes, right? And so should we suddenly not put Ford Go bikes on street corners? I mean, that's not how you design policy. And so his inquiry is not inappropriate. I just believe the timing of it is, and I don't support investigating this further at this time. So I appreciate you asking that request because I know you're...you live in that neighborhood, and I know that he and the other neighbors have called you first. And so I totally appreciate why you're asking for that. I just...I can't support that request at this time. Are there three members who wish to support this at this time? I've heard...Member Martinez, are you supportive?
I'm supportive of taking it up at the Public Works Transportation Committee as a...an agenda item.
So regardless of...okay, so well, in the future. So the question is whether to do it now. So I'm willing to put it on an agenda at some point in the future when we move other things. But I didn't want to put it on...if we put it on the Transportation Committee, Andrew is going to have to do something about it and start dealing with it now.
As the chair of the committee, I am not interested in putting it on this month's agenda. We have a very packed couple of months right now.
Okay. Member Pats, where are you on this?
You know, I've spoken very briefly with Mr. Frickie, and I understand, because he's going back in history to mistakes that were made when they implemented the traffic circles. I remember the diverters. I remember the whole process. I lived through them. It's a street I used to get to my house. So diverters inconvenienced me. That said, I'm much more in agreement with what Member Medina said. They don't have time for that right now. And so when we have time, we'll get to it. And unfortunately, sometimes things get kicked out of the queue. So that's it.
Okay.
Can I just take a second to respond? Can I just take a, a second to respond?
Of course.
Well, thank you for entertaining the idea, at least, and I hope we can come back to this. I do think it fits into our priorities. We did add, I don't remember if it was seventh or eighth, that traffic safety to our list of top 10 priorities, but it's, you know, if, for another day, then so be it. But it's, the folks who contacted me, I don't think had any contact with Mr. Frickie. There were people who were independently concerned, so.
Okay, so I don't think we have a council consensus to move on that. Are there any other council future agenda item requests from council members? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, the time is 9:44. Meeting is adjourned.